What's up? What's the last tomorrow, she says hi.
Yeah, he does. Look at that.
She does the call con.
Oh, sure.
She does.
Very well.
Talking to her. She got an office in our building upstairs.
Well, hello, everybody. Welcome to a special session of council to discuss the Riverfront project. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised in the progress and then what it's going to be looking like. Before we get started, I wanted to remind council that next Tuesday, don't forget about our meeting at... Let me look before I tell you wrong. Well, yeah, at 1:00 and then immediately follow executive session immediately followed by a 2:00 open session. 2:00 should not last long. So, don't forget about that, 1:00, 2:00. Okay. Mr. Fettie, can we get a roll call?
Yep, we got councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
We got councilperson Justin Nopper not here. We got councilperson Tommy Rolet.
Present.
We got councilperson Lenny Fromm.
Here.
And Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Dale Weldon.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Vanon.
Here.
And myself.
Okay. Well, without further ado, I think I'll turn it over to either Matt or Nancy and...
I'll get the ball rolling.
Get going.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's great to see you again. Quick reminder, I'm Matthew Rourke with American Structure Point and Nancy Lear with Moffett Nickel. We've teamed up, you know, to work on this project. And I want to say we were here about six weeks ago. We presented an update on the layouts and where the modifications had come. And so, since that time, a big part of what we were waiting on, we wanted to have a meeting with the Army Corps, which we actually, we called it a red flag. It wasn't official permit or a yes or no. But essentially, it was a hey, are we showing anything on these plans that's completely out of the realm of reality? We were able to have and connect and have that meeting last week and had a review with their engineer. They seem to think everything we're proposing is good in terms of it's feasible. There's some extra analysis we're going to have to do as we go through the process. But really, we have kind of the go-ahead to start moving forward, put the final engineering, you know, documents, construction details, all those things. They're ready to have that and then we'll start talking about submitting 408 applications, 404 applications, all those things that really enter into the approval process. So, we've gotten it to a point where we're there, except for some of the final details that we want to talk about this evening. The biggest, you know, last time we were here, we talked a lot about coming up with some options, particularly on the barge side for railings, you know, pieces, just to look at fit and finish kind of things, details that we need to know before we can really move into that final design process. Nancy's going to be presenting a lot of those this evening. And then on the dry side, what we're going to do is just replicate whichever options you come up with. So, it has a nice cohesive look as best we can because railing on the dry side is a little easier to put in than on the barges because that's a little more of a specialty item, so to speak. So, and we don't have to worry about weight, thankfully, as much as Nancy does. So, with that, that's kind of the overall update. We've been working away. I'll just bring up this first plan here. In terms of what American Structure Point's working on, which is really everything north of the waterline, the extended walkways off the event center, Ivy Tech, reworking the entryway. Not much of that has changed. It's just some minor little details as we're working through, except for a couple of things. And I think Nancy's going to explain those in more detail, what they are. But really, that's where we're at. And then so, based on the comments that we heard about the barge system, especially the handicapped accessibility of those things, we've been really trying to work through those items. And that's what Nancy's going to show you on the next few slides and we'll have a conversation after that. So, with that, I will turn it over to Nancy and we'll go from there.
Like Matt said, one of the things we did talk to the Army Corps about where we had three different options for how that new gangway comes off the landing. And they basically said, you can kind of do really anything you need. If you want to reuse the existing footpad that's there for the gangway that was there for the casino boat, you can do that if you need to modify it. We would just need to work with them on some of the calculations to modify it. And then one of the other, this option one is a layout that our structural engineer came up with to help with the gangway and the ADA access. And that's providing a landing in the middle. Like, so the top part of the gangway would actually be fixed. And then you'd have a landing and then you would go down to an articulating gangway. That would also give a resting point for your ADA access, but also a selfie spot for, you know, being at the river, you know, people taking pictures with the barge parked behind them, all those types of things. And that would actually be out of, we would, we're waiting for the Army Corps to send us plans, but that would actually be out of their flood wall jurisdiction. So, we could put piling in to support that landing. And then our other option is to just come straight off, straight onto the landing. But that's, we're looking at 190-foot-long gangway, which we realize is a really long way when you think about it. And it can be at that angle that's probably a little more steep than most people would like for ADA compatibility. So, that's like the first, kind of the first decision we kind of wanted to go with. Do we like the landing or do we want to just not have the landing?
Any comments, guys?
Just, I will say, with the landing option, we do want to, we haven't had a chance to check with the LCD on that location to make sure they get their equipment around there to do what, you know, Paul needs to do with the maintenance and all those things. So, that, if we go with that option, we'll go back to him and make sure that that works for him too. But we haven't, we wanted to get your feedback this evening first on whether that's preferred or not before we did so.
And right now, I have it so it would straddle that access, that dirt access. It would be wide enough for a truck or anything that's necessary to get under it for the LCD, so.
So, that landing is at the bottom of the levee?
Yes, but elevated.
Elevated, yeah.
Yes, so I think we have it at an elevation of, you know, plus 478. So, we're about, it's about 20 or so feet in the air from where that gravel road is.
And then it would protrude, go down to the barge and then...
Yes.
Have the ADA...
And then the, yes. And that would be an articulating gangway. Whereas from, you know, the top of the levee to the platform would be at a constant slope. It would not move.
I like the separate walkway or gangway, but what's the difference in cost between the two? I bet the separate one...
It's going to be a little bit more. But I think you're going to have better access is, was our thought. Because I think, I think going down 190 feet is going to be...
I was going to say, I don't like the 190-foot-long walkway, especially when it's flooded.
Exactly.
Yeah, what would be the grade of that at just a regular level of the river, the longer one, I wonder?
It was going to be steeper than most ADA accesses. I do remember that. Because we're talking, we were, we're going at normal pool elevation, which is like 455. And that is up at like 490. So, you're, it's a, it's pretty steep.
Yeah, with the straight, with the one gangway, there's just no way to avoid...
There's no, there's no way to avoid it.
What's it like, 5%?
To meet...
To meet ADA access or ADA...
Or the existing, if it was just the straight gangway, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Oh, it was over 8?
It was over 8. Yeah. It's pretty steep.
What's the ADA compliance?
I think it's 5.
Well, can't exceed 4.
4, it's like 1 over 12, whatever that is.
So, you've got 2% on your typical walkway. So, that's a quarter.
My, my opinion, I think that the 190-foot gangway is entirely too cumbersome. And I think we run more of a risk of problems, my take. Yeah, the splitting it up may be a little, maybe more expensive. We assume it will. But I think at this point, in the concept of the project, that we, we go with what we think is the best for what we need. We can always, you know, if at the end, when budget numbers come or the proposed engineered numbers come and we think, hey, we need to trim somewhere, that may not be a place you trim. You may trim somewhere else.
Yeah.
Mayor, I think maintenance wise, especially with drifts, I think, you know, 2, 2 gangways is going to be easier to maintain in the long run.
Good point.
Yes. And I think, and it'll be easier to get the utilities through that gangway corridor as well with it not articulating at the top.
It just worries me with the flood. I mean, we've seen water lap into the top of that levee almost. And that's a lot of water moving. If we just have one, that's a lot of water pressure against it.
It is, but it would be kind of like a bridge. So, I mean, you'd have, it would be on four piers.
It would go with the rise of the, of the water. But still, I agree though, Tony, it's still, that's a lot of water. Any other comments about that piece? I think the, I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but layout option 1 on the gangplank is a better option.
Better option, okay.
Better option than number 2?
That's the way I feel. When I wrote down option 1.
That's kind of the way we felt too. And I was actually happy that, you know, bringing in Isaac, who wasn't involved in the feasibility, he kind of came up with this and was like, well, what if we put this platform out in the middle? And I said, well, let's see what the Army Corps has to say. And they didn't have anything to say about it, so we'll go with it.
Yeah, in some regards, it might make the mooring at the top easier because it's...
Yeah.
We have to have the engineer working on that part, take a, dive into that, but it might help in the long run too, so.
Yep. So, that would also change some of these. You know, we have a ramp and stair system that we're showing on the barge that was kind of trying to help with some of that ADA access and kind of raise up that gangway. So, those may shift a little bit, but we still are probably going to have that on there just to make sure that we are giving that access. So, then we're going to go into the actual finishes. We're going to start with the railings. So, these are the 3 railings that we showed the last time with the existing railing in this top corner. And in my research of costs for these, all of the railings are fairly the same price. They're all kind of in the same ballpark at 120 to 140, 150 dollars a linear foot. I could not find a price on the cable mesh, even talking to our estimators. So, if we wanted to go that route, I'd have to kind of find a price, but...
So, the stainless versus the painted on the finishes, price per foot, about the same?
It's about the same.
What has held up better in the area over the years, Mario, the stainless or...
Stainless wood over the painted or the coated?
Oh, yeah.
Because isn't, didn't you talk about the last time the painted catches all of that yeast or whatever from the, from the distillery?
Black mold.
Mm-hmm.
It caused all that pitting, that's right.
We've lived...
So, we could even do, so we could do the rigid tubes or somewhat like the stainless steel cables. It just kind of all depends on the look that you guys want to do.
$150 a foot?
I mean, that's, that's fabricated and installed. Yeah.
That's installed, though.
Yeah.
It's placed, correct?
Yes.
We definitely want the stainless steel. I mean, look at the metal here. Can you see how the rust?
Yes, yes. Yes, stainless steel is always the way to go.
Natural, Tony.
I thought we'd just take that down, put it down on the barges.
Personally, I like the stainless steel cables. And one of the reasons that being is if you go to Doubletree now, that's similar to what they have there.
Is it? Okay.
Their little court area.
Their patio?
Yes.
Okay.
Pretty good. That's just my thoughts.
And we can, you guys...
I prefer the cables as well.
Okay. I think it actually gives you a better vision of the water. Like, it's not obstructing the view more, is my opinion.
Yeah, that was my thought as well.
The only bad thing about cable, keep in mind...
Okay.
It's like a natural ladder, no matter what.
Yep.
Standing, leaning, with a rigid, it's not going to show the bag or sway as much as a cable will over time.
So, are you recommending the rigid tubes then?
Rigid seems to last a little longer, a little more maintenance free. And I'm just looking at the maintenance side of it.
That's a good point.
That's a fair point.
Yeah.
But, you know, people will, and especially kids...
Well, they'll, they'll climb on these tubes too. So, this is a...
Tube's a little more forgiving than...
Yeah, than the cables. So, you're, you are correct.
I think is what Mario's saying.
Yeah. So, this, these tubes are actually, we use these on, we did a riverwalk project in Tampa where our office is. And it's like 3 miles long of an elevated walkway. And we have those on the sides.
Depending where it's at, you know, we shouldn't have a lot of drift. But if it's going to be the same on down at the lower level, there's a chance to drift actually getting up on that one railing system at the barge level.
It shouldn't. I think we have like 4-foot of freeboard on the barges. So, we shouldn't get any water on top of the barge unless...
It's a water, it's a drift.
Drift, okay. Oh, you're thinking, talking about snow.
Say the electors.
Yeah.
Tree limbs.
Which we'll talk about.
And the point being, it's just the limbs, you know, we had pretty good-sized trees to make their way down and across there. Where again, 4-foot of freeboard's fine, but when you've got a 12-foot limb or, you know...
This is very true.
Branches coming up, it's a little more forgiving on the rigid tubing than it is the...
Hey, Cable, can I, can I add something? I don't want to, anybody in the audience, I, I don't, it's not that you don't have an option to speak up. We want you to speak up. But I think for lack of running you up to the microphone each time you might have a comment, I would ask you, you hold those comments till the end and then maybe bring them to us. As far as at the end of the, you know, we'll ask for comments. That way, then if people want to come up to the mic, because this is being taped.
Yes, it is.
And I want to make sure everybody that maybe is listening at home or are going to listen at home, that they would have the option of hearing what the comments were for from the audience as well, if there are any. I just didn't want you to think that you weren't, that you would be not being able to participate, so. Anyway, go ahead. So, we're, we're talking tubes versus cables. And it sounds like to me, people are saying tubes.
Well, after this...
Thing about the tubes is that if you're talking about debris hitting them, it's going to bend them.
They would probably be more rigid, they'll probably be more rigid than a cable, so.
Well, the cable would give.
But also break.
Well, they're fresh, maybe. It'd be easier to replace them with a rigid, wouldn't it?
Would it be?
These cables are threaded through like a journal, like a fitting. It's...
And I think they would have like, at some point, they have a turnbuckle.
Yes, termination.
Yeah. They probably go through 1 or 2 stanchions and then there's turnbuckles and then they start again.
And looking at the rigid tubes, they look like they're in sections as well, right? So, it's come to shove.
But they'd be welded, so...
You know what I'm saying? If it were to get damaged one time, we would possibly be able to replace it easier.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, you know, we're going to replicate on the riverwalk too, whatever was decided for the barge. So, you know, to Mario's point about standing and, you know, you're not going to have the drift issue up there, but you're going to have kids standing on things and bending it that way. So, if long-term, if that's the better maintenance decision, that might make sense.
I think we have cables actually up there at Doubletree now on that outside patio.
That's what I just stated earlier, yeah. That's why I was sort of going that route.
Yeah.
Until you made mention of what you made mention of.
We've, those have been tightened up quite a few times.
But they look good.
They do. They're just, you know, more viewing area.
I was going to say, if you have better viewing area, looking at, looking down on it.
So, you're not sold on the rigid tubes there, old buddy?
Not really, but, you know, that's just me.
Can you live with it?
Yeah.
I mean, any other, what are you guys thinking?
Plans from Doubletree? You guys tend to double tree, right?
Have to go with the rigid tubes.
Yeah, I agree. I think even before him, they were like 1A, 1B for me, so it was...
Yes, exactly.
And, you know, I just...
The cable mesh is never...
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. That was the, the third and last. The other 2 were just eye tests. Didn't really think about any maintenance issues or anything like that.
Well, and I can get with Matt as to what is used at the Doubletree and see if we can replicate something similar, but maybe a little more rigid than the cables. Do something in between.
Yeah, maybe, maybe there's a smaller diameter tube.
A smaller diameter tube.
That is not shown on the picture there.
Yeah.
We don't want to go too small though, because kids will be climbing it.
Oh, yeah.
They want more.
Yeah. Good point you made, definitely.
Okay.
So, would this railing be consistent on all parts down there?
Yes.
Like even the new gangway, you talked about the pier that would build up? You said it's like 20 feet off the ground?
Yes. That would be the railing around it. The, the gangway is going to actually mirror the gangway that is actually out there now, existing. So, those are all, all 3 gangways are going to match. And then this will be the consistent railing for, it'll line around the barges and that landing and anywhere else up, up on the...
Different than the gangway that's down there?
We can make it purple if you want it purple, Mayor.
I don't think rust or color match. Well, based on our conversation last time, we'll just, we'll find what's available, right? And we'll paint it that color.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Patina.
Birds up there.
There's no more birds.
Okay.
No more birds up there.
Dogs got rid of the birds.
All right. So, then we're going to go to the transient dock decking options that we have. And that's, we can do just regular pressure-treated pine. We can do a composite decking or we can do the fiberglass grating that Guinevere had sent us from, where was that?
2 areas that we've seen in Alabama and Florida, an area that had extensive area revitalization after a hurricane. They have this fiberglass grating because it allowed water to come up, come down, it was easy to clean. The majority of new docks that were built were this type of material, so I sent it in as a composite for comparison.
Yep.
One thing about that, I mean, this fiberglass grating is shown on a dock itself, but these...
Yes.
People going down here for dinner, ladies in high heels.
That is very true.
Well, in there.
Yeah.
Good point.
But if we go back to the composite decking, this can actually look just like wood. It can be in whatever color that you want it. And it's sort of that same feel of... It's not, it's less maintenance than actual like timber, pine, especially with the snow and the snowdrift that could be piling up on that.
What's the difference in pricing between the pressure-treated pine and...
The pressure-treated pine was actually a little bit more expensive than the composite decking.
For a 10-year life?
Yeah, for about a 10-year life. Yep. The price of lumber has gone through the roof over the last 2 years. It's insane.
What's, what's better for traction? Is it the...
I would say the composite decking is probably a little bit better. Because I will say docks that I've been on that are the pressure-treated pine after like 3 or 4 years, as soon as it gets wet, it's slick.
They get slick. Almost like slime for them.
Yeah, it's some sort of a slime. It's like the pressure treating comes out or something in it. But, but these can have sort of a finish to them or like a surface, like a sandy, it's not sandy, but it's a rougher surface so that it's not as slick. Because I know when it first came out, like the Brazilian hardwoods and all of those, they could be slick too. But they've, they've definitely come, come along over the years.
It says slip resistant, right?
Mm-hmm. And a lot of them are UV-protected, so they don't really change color, you know. A lot of them were getting that like weathered white look to 10, 15 years ago.
Comments?
Well, number 1, option of the wood, I think that gets too slick. Number 3, I think it'd be dangerous for women in their high heels. I'm going with composite decking.
I'll agree with that as well.
But it's simple.
What about you, Mr. Cable versus...
I think it's pretty cool. I think that's the way we need to go.
Definitely want your input, Mr.
I don't know whereby high heels slip and fall.
Yeah, I...
Brett?
No, it looks like the 2 and 3 are pretty similar. I think the note of allowing some water to, you know, kind of relieve itself, I guess. I like the idea of that. Obviously, composite decking isn't going to allow us to do any of that, which is kind of a little scary if it does flood down there.
But we will, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, these docks are all going to be free-floating.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
So, and if you're saying you're going to have 4-foot of...
Freeboard.
Freeboard. That shouldn't see water.
It shouldn't. Unless it's coming, you know, somebody's emptying a cooler, something like that.
Designed in storm surge areas, it's the whole idea for that.
Yeah, the, the grating is usually typically around somewhere that's going to get, A, some storm surge, but a lot of waves. And then sometimes they have to have them also for the sea life underneath. So, if it's in a seagrass area, especially in Florida, you have to let so much light through to continue seagrass growth in that area. So, that's a lot of times why they use the fiberglass decking.
And these boards are what, quarter inch spaced?
They'll be just like your regular timber.
Composite?
That's my vote. Padres? That's my vote.
Okay.
Okay. I like it. All right. And then we're going to go to, this is for the barges themselves. Just so we can talk, be talking to the barge manufacturers and get some sort of loading for the decking options that we have. We have some of the similar options between, we can do a stamped concrete. We could do some turf sections to where it feels like grass or it's like a kid's play area, something like that. Gives a place where people could sit on, you know, like bring a towel and sit down there and have a picnic lunch or something like that. And then for, if we wanted to designate walkways or anything like that, we could either use the fiberglass grating or we could go with the composite decking. I think this is where we kind of need to understand the programming of the actual barges themselves.
I guess I'm confused. But that's not, people are out of the norm.
So, the tops of the barges, we can pretty much do anything. They're kind of a blank slate. So, if we wanted to do like the stamped concrete or colored concrete, for example, or put a decorative pattern out there, we'd basically tell the barge manufacturer, we want, you know, some lips and this is what we're going to do, this is the weight of it. And then it would be dressed that way. We could put the composite decking all over the top of it and it looks like a big dock. Or we can do a little bit of everything.
So, where were you putting the composite decking that we were just talking about?
On the floating docks, the transient ones, where people are pulling their boat up to get off.
Okay, where the boat slips are.
Yes, the boat slips.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I don't want to talk too much here, but I'm just thinking, wouldn't we, wouldn't we want to be consistent?
Well, sometimes you can use different docking materials for different areas of, of access or as a design standard too.
So like you could use that composite decking to say, okay, here's where we want the actual walkways to be. And then you could have other areas off to the side that have benches and there's, you know, something similar to what's on here. There's benches and some sort of decorative pattern on there. And then there's also, you know, okay, we want an area where kids can go and play and climb, so they don't climb on the rails. Let's give them something to climb on and it's a turf area or people can go and sit with a picnic.
I like the look of.
Or the food that they bought at the restaurant.
I like the look of the turf area, but we have one problem with our turf areas now in our parks, that electricity.
Even with the like little rubber balls and everything like that in it?
I don't know. We've asked them if there's something we could do about it and they've said no. Live with it.
Yes, Morse there said, seems like just at the arch street, correct? I'm not heard much about it.
Yeah, cause usually they put like
Really bad.
like little pieces of rubber. I know my son plays baseball and they play on a turf field and every.
That's just to groom the, the blades to keep them vertical.
Correct.
It doesn't.
Doesn't help with the static? I wish he figured out something. My granddaughter is going to murder me. If I touch her.
It's calmed down quite a bit, but there's a lot of plastic itself over there though, just with the.
So you don't think?
The elements.
You don't think this would do the same thing?
Oh, it may. It may zap you.
I think we want to stay away from the turf.
Well, here, here's my, my concern. When it's, uh, blazing hot days, okay? I've been on composite decking and I've been on treated lumber and they, they get hot. Turf will not get hot.
Well, it will.
Well, but it won't get hot like.
Not like, not like decking.
That. I mean, I don't know what, I mean, in, in the, like fiberglass, I, that, that would get hot. I, I'm, I'm just concerned about if we're, I, I understand that, you know, we want to maybe put, make the walkways a, a certain.
Per square foot, Mayor, you'd be cheaper to put stamped concrete than you would the composite. Like a deck of concrete.
Stamp concrete gets hot too, though.
Yeah, but it's not going to be like the mayor said, compared to like your composite decking. Per square foot, it's going to be cheaper and cooler with the concrete.
And this is, will be on top of the barges, correct?
Correct.
My question there.
Social areas of the barge, more or less, as you would call it.
If there is any flex in the barge, would it tend to possibly crack?
It'd be isolated from.
Yes, so it'll, it, it basically like.
Like a slab sitting on top.
There's no concern about weight either then, right?
No, we just have to tell them kind of what weights we're looking at, like dead weight, so they can, you know, balance the barges appropriately.
Similar to like the docks that are down there now, these transpond docks, those are concrete on.
If, I mean, if you did the stamped concrete throughout the whole thing, you could, you know, do different colors and, or different stamps or patterns, you know, for the area that you're going to block off for tables for people to eat at, you know, walkways. You could stamp your logo in it.
The only, the only thing I would add to that is for the walkway on top of the levee, we don't have a choice. We're doing concrete because of the counterbalance system for the cantilever, so maybe, I don't know if that matters to, in terms of, you want it to have a little more uniform. That, that's kind of where I was going with that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, is, we don't have a choice. That's just what we have to use to make sure the weights work for the cantilever part, so.
Yeah, but that's not going to be moving.
Oh, no, no.
No.
That's going to be stable.
No, no, I, I was thinking just thematically, the stamped concrete could replicate what we're doing on top in terms of tying it all together is where I was going with that.
And that concrete wouldn't get, you know, when it gets wet, it ain't going to be slick?
No, 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 I think we talked about it last time, what we were talking about, probably when they finish it, it'll have that kind of rougher kind of surface to it. Yeah.
Broom finish.
Right.
It'd be the same texture you have on the sidewalk.
Yep.
Right.
Wouldn't you want a little turf though for like kids at least or?
That was our thought, is there would at least be an area you can
Pets can go.
Go with some of the boulders that are.
You don't think that would happen?
They make a special, they make a special turf area for that, for the pets.
But like stamped concrete with a little, a couple turf areas.
I think, yeah, I think it may be a mixture. I, I think it would break it up.
If it's all concrete.
Concrete, you look like it's just going to concrete.
Down there, there's, you know.
I mean, we do want the public to go down there and enjoy it.
Yeah.
We want places for them to sit, we want places for them to enjoy their, even if they're not down there to eat. They want to just walk down.
When the kids from Ivy Tech are going to go down underneath their couches between classes.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So I think when you start designing it, when we get, you know, I would use a combination of things.
Yep.
I have to agree with that.
If you put concrete on, would you put concrete on the whole thing and then add turf on top of that wherever you decide you want it?
I don't know how they would do that. I would think so. I'm not an engineer, but I would think so.
You could do either way, and I think the biggest thing is going to be the balance, you know, which way.
Right, right, because the turf is going to weigh less than actual concrete, so.
So I'm sure their engineering is going to kind of coordinate that with.
Well, we can get some of our, our landscape architects that are really good at planning out spaces, now that we know that we want benches. Do we want, um, shade structures? I know that's not in this package, but.
Say you have to have some down there.
Something.
Big buckets and plant trees.
I know that was coming.
Shade structures, yeah.
Okay.
I think you incorporate that down.
That, that was my thought, is they're easy to, they're easy to get in and out. We can put different, um, like inserts so you can move them around a bit, so, okay.
What we don't want is something that, you, I mean, we want something that will sustain wind because I, I don't want to have to worry about sending folks down there to take this down or take that down in a windstorm, you know.
I think it would be more just winterizing it, you know, like when the winter comes, shade structures come down.
That's a big, big challenge we had when we had the boat races and anything that we've had down there, it's just like the surface of the sun, it's just no, no escaping.
Yeah, no escaping.
Sun. People would bring umbrellas, so.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we'll come up with a few ideas for kind of planning that out. And then I had Brazilian hardwood in here, but I think that we've decided that that's probably not an option, so. And it would be expensive, yeah. So, um, and then I've got a lot in here about lighting. And I just, as we're going through these railings and things, um, you know, just kind of wanting to get an understanding of what kind of lighting do we want out there? So if we're, with the whole railing, I would say we would probably do some sort of this handrail lighting, um, where it either comes up from the bottom or it goes along the bottom of the handrail and it's all lit up and it's pretty, um, as opposed to the bollard lights. Yeah, okay. I think, I think the handrail light gives more light and it's a little safer. It would draw people out there in the evenings.
This image, I think it's, you know, we're after a lot different vibe than maybe an ocean side.
Yeah.
You know, kind of thing. This isn't going to be a place that you can head off the side.
Well, and some of, and also some of those that are like ocean side, they have to have minimal lighting for turtles and things like that. I don't think we have those restrictions. So we'll light it up like a Christmas tree.
Are we just being railing around the whole thing or are there going to be open sections that, not outside of where the slips are, obviously?
No, there won't be any open sections for safety. And then, um, there's additional accent up, up lighting. Are you guys doing accent lighting like this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're looking at the different systems on whether we can project up the wall or down it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's.
It all ties back.
Yeah, that's their piece. And then did we want to do any, um, like closed circuit TV, you know, like for security? Or, um, you know, do we want the big lights out there that kind of? Or are we just want to stick with handrails lighting?
You know, we'll, I'm sure we'll integrate our current camera system and sound system into that, I don't know if we do that after the fact or, because we want to match. We'll have, we already have cameras all over the city and
Okay.
speakers all over the city, over that.
So I wonder, so is that something our, our, our lighting and electrical group could get with you guys on? Just so we can make sure that we put the infrastructure down there.
Our IT person, yes.
Okay.
Bryson Walkie is our.
Yeah.
Is that compatible with something like the, um, like the handrail or do we need to be after a more of like a tower look to incorporate all the, this, the speaker systems and stuff like that?
It, it can be used. It, it can be done in, in a, a number of ways. It doesn't have to be like out here on the poles.
Okay.
Is what I was told, so.
So, um, Dell, if you would send me that inform, that his contact information?
Yeah.
That way I can get them together and we can make sure.
Card right out there.
Okay.
Got a card out there.
Perfect. That way we can get them talking because.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Walked out for a minute. Did you guys talk about the accent lighting yet? I, I want it all lit up so when you cross that bridge, you see it at night. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, so that, you guys are doing the accent lighting that is up on the top, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just have to, we have to figure out if it looks better going up from the barge or down. I think it, it's more of a.
And that's something that will coordinate.
That's one more, that's one.
Where, where that connectivity is.
You know, I think we've all wanted to make sure that we have it real well lit down there. And noticeable. If you go across the bridge now at night, you know, how we lit the eighty-one poles on the trail? You can see it now. You never could see any of that.
Well, I, I just think, you know, the different color lighting, accent lighting would be really neat.
Yeah, it will be cool. So we, I know he started bringing up the accent lighting. Did we determine where we were going to be with the handrail lighting? We want to go with the handrail, not the bollard?
Yes, we're going to go with the handrail.
Just wanted to make sure.
I think it, it'll get more light, it'll be a little more safe, or it'll seem safer, right? When there's more light, it seems safer, so. Um, we could do the bollard lights on the transient docks. That's one thing we didn't talk about was what kind of lighting do we want on the transient docks, which won't have handrails?
Yeah, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. And then you guys have security and webcams and communication systems. And then on, um, we just put this in here, but on the debris diverter, we'll have to have solar navigation lights, just so people know that it's out there. And then, um, a pro, something we've used on other projects are these solar benches. I don't know what kind of bench we want, but these, apparently you can charge your phone and computer. I don't know if it's necessary out at the water.
I don't know, everybody got their phone anymore. We want them to come down here.
I don't know what these would cost.
What's the price point on those? Do you have any idea?
I did not get the price point on those, but.
Cause I know where our, our regular bench, our benches are pretty.
Right, yeah.
We're about thirteen hundred per unit.
They look good.
They look good. Are you, do we want to mimic that on here or do we want different benches to be placed on, on the barges?
We want to try to unify things as much as possible, don't we?
The benches we have are pretty comfortable benches.
Okay.
I think Guinevere's kind of branded that way for our parks and.
We're here shaking my head. You're, you're expanding your, your parks and recreational amenities and there's consistency and it flows and it, it just looks really.
Okay. If you would send me some information on those benches, um, that would be great. That way we can get the weight of them and make sure that we continue that look.
They're similar to the bench on the right.
I thought, I thought so, something similar, just without the ugly solar panel on the back. And then, um, I guess we're not probably going to do any other solar lighting because it just, it really doesn't flow, so.
We have access to electricity, so.
Of course.
If there was a pilot, there's electric put out there, absolutely.
Right. Right, okay. And then those were all the options we had so far. Um, I will take you back to the layout first. I forgot to mention, let me get this back up to you. You may notice that this is slightly different right here in the middle, where we've added a, um, a restroom that we talked about in the last meeting. It'll have its own float and it'll be access, um, however long you guys want to have it open. It'll be individualized, not within the restaurant, but that's also where we're going to hide all of the mechanical and electrical, um, all of the meters and boxes and everything like that, so it's super clean. Um, I think it will have four. I think it'll be like a women's with two stalls, a men, and then a unisex. I think is what we've decided on. And then it'll have a floating walkway that'll connect the two, so you don't have to walk through the restaurants to get to it.
The restrooms will be big enough if somebody's in a wheelchair that they can access.
All ADA accessible, yes.
So backing up, you said two stalls and the women. The men's would have one.
And then a, and then a unisex. I can't remember what the men's has, if it has a stall and a, and a urinal. Yeah, something like that, yeah. And then there would be like a unisex or family restroom. Single.
Then the restaurants will have their own.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
They, they'll have to meet the fixture requirements of any restaurant.
Yes.
Right, on size and all that stuff.
But that was one thing we talked about last meeting, we didn't want to
Yes.
Go into restaurants.
Go into restaurants only, yes.
Or on the turf. There we go with that again. Don't get me stirred on turf.
Between him and Lenny, I'll tell you what.
Say a word, Mr. Dobbin. Lenny hadn't seen the Ferris wheel in this picture.
It's, yeah, it's. It's in the next update, you know, next time we meet, it'll be all designed and ready.
I've got a, I've got a question, the, um, like where the restaurants are right now, this right here. How much, how much farther out is everything going to be pushed out into the river compared to where it is now? Or like where the restaurant is right now, is that kind of where the restaurant would be in this picture or is it?
No, we're, it's further out into the river. Probably about a hundred feet.
Is that going to be in trouble with barges and stuff coming through there?
The Army Corps and the, and the Coast Guard, so that's. Now, we have to actually have a separate meeting with the regulatory division of the Army Corps to double check and make sure that that's where we, that we're okay. But I think we are almost five hundred feet from the center line of the channel. Is the outward face of the barges.
Boy, when they come up turning up to you, they're heavy going.
What is the maintenance on the barges? I mean, the, the ones that's down there now, we've had to actually pick them up and send them off and get underneath repainted or whatever.
Well, so from what I understand, that was a used barge.
Right.
Right? That was already there and they modified it. So it'll probably be somewhat similar, probably every fifteen, maybe twenty years, probably have to do the same thing.
I was just wondering if we could do something beforehand to extend that time. Cause that's, when we have to do that and we got to pick this thing up, that's going to cost.
You can do it individually though.
Mm-hmm.
They'll be able to be separated.
Yep.
Right.
They'll be able to be separated. So, but yeah, I mean, there will be some maintenance, but.
Twenty years gets me, uh, gets me out here.
I would never.
Kick the can down the road.
Hey, it's gonna be really nice.
I still wanna enjoy it.
It will be enjoyable.
I wanna be down there in twenty or thirty.
Every, everything, it's like everything you, we've built, right? I've always said this, every park we've built, everything, you'll, you end up having to feed it. And, and it's gonna, this is gonna be nothing but the same thing. You eventually have to feed it, you eventually gonna have to replace the railings, you eventually have to replace decking, you're eventually gonna have to replace.
There should be some generation of economic stimulus that comes, that's gonna help feed.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I would, I would assume.
Well, you're doing both, you're, you're being smart, you're building it in a way that has future proofing. And like Justin said, it's gonna generate revenue.
Mm-hmm. Especially if you're charging a lease on those restaurant barges, too.
You need it in all boats.
No, you just need the one now, right, the computer?
Yeah.
What number you're at?
They get Morgan down there in a little boat, give him a ticket.
Don't give him any of that.
He can die, he can do, he can just be underwater and pop up and gig it.
That's good, that's.
Okay.
One thing I, I, I wanted to ask a question about, the, the deflector. Have you guys done any research into the deflector?
We are still working on it, I've got a, a staff engineer that's.
Okay.
Doing some research and reconnaissance into that, as well as, um, costs and everything for the actual barges. How much lead time we need, cause it may be that we need to separate this into different packages so that we make sure that we have construction all at the same time.
Yeah, I, I, I would imagine the barges are a high.
They're probably, yeah, they might be a yearly time.
If we have to make some decisions.
Mm-hmm.
And we did find the, uh, mooring point for the diverter barge on the bank up there.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm just kinda curious, how does that deflector thing work? I mean, is that?
Yeah.
So the. Yeah, so the piles will stick out of the water, quite, the piles that it's, that'll, the guide piles?
It's affixed to.
Yeah, that it's affixed to, the structural poles will stick out of the water quite far. Um, and then the debris deflector is probably about three feet.
Out of the water?
No, in the wat, underneath the water, and it would, it'll float up on the, the guide piles, just like a floating dock or a barge would.
But I noticed you got that transient dock inside there, would those boats have to go around that to get in there? Or how does that work?
They will, and we're still optimizing how far that goes in around that, but yes, they will have to go in there.
The amount of distance, and correct me if I'm wrong, where you see the deflector there to where the, the barges are.
Yeah, that's about sixty feet.
It, it, but it, the deflector might be.
It might be further back.
Up river.
Yes, yes, right, right here where we, how we've shown it, is probably about as far as it would go.
They can sink in this way, then too, couldn't they, most?
Well, yeah.
If they were shallow.
How far does it stick out of the water? Cause I'm sure it's probably a heavy metal, whatever it is.
It floats.
The water's gonna grid through it, but it lets lock.
It lets water through, it's almost like, um.
It pushes the debris down, which is, this is on it, but I mean, is it something that someone's gonna pull the boat out at night and like?
Well, and that's why we're gonna have lights on it, that's why there'll be lights on the guide piles, but, um.
I've been drinking at the bar, said we can make it, make it.
They'll only do it once, let's just say that. Um, but it'll, it'll actually be something similar to the mesh, cause it'll let water flow through very, very easily, but not trees, tree limbs and big debris.
So, we'll have buoys or something underneath of it, so we, again, it will raise.
It'll, it.
As the river.
Yep. Just like a, the docks well in the barges and everything else.
That's not gonna hurt anything being that far out in the river?
It shouldn't.
All that debris going around and all them barges coming back up through there? You're talking five hundred feet now, and that's gonna be another, what, fifty feet out past that, so that the debris can go around it?
No, we're five hundred feet from the center line of the channel, so there's five hundred feet from the center line of that channel to where the outer, s, outer line of the barges and the restaurants are.
We're just trying to get it out far enough, Lenny, where the next place it hits is Aurora.
That was Tony Abbott.
Much like you, much like you clean it out now, um, they're, especially down at this end, probably. You'll need to clean that out, but the object would be for it to just shoot it around and it go further down river.
These aren't something new, and they're, they're, they're all over.
No. There's a few, um, that we've done up the Ohio River, um, I'm trying to remember the names of them. Most of them were at like the big shell and refineries and things like that. And some of them have been successful and some of them have not been successful, so we're trying to use those as. Yes, so we're trying to use that, that lessons learned to do something better here, so.
This is an important piece to the puzzle, right? Cause how much, how much further out did you say we would be than we, we currently are now?
Probably about a hundred feet, and this is another.
Obviously increases our, our chances of any potential.
More debris, mm-hmm, yeah.
So, this boom, this boom's, is very important.
Very important.
How high does it go?
It protects our investment.
Yeah.
That's one of those, so it's not gonna be that high. At some point, we have to say.
Yeah.
You know, what.
What hits, hits.
Yeah.
But, how about the durability of it?
That's what we're trying to do, the lessons learned, we're really trying to understand how durable we need this to really be.
Nancy, if you could get us, get me a list, or, uh, uh, give me, get me the, the name of a successful.
Mm-hmm.
That's up in, up, up river.
Yeah.
Case we wanna make, take a little field trip.
Yeah.
Visual.
Yep.
I'd just like to see a visual.
I would too. Did you say we were five hundred feet from the, the center, what'd you call it?
Center line of the, of the river.
Can I, can I ask a que, can, can, can we have a five minute pause? I, I gotta phone call, I gotta.
Sure. Wait, you came in late, okay? Let's just be honest.
Hey, Matt.
Yes, sir.
You're a good man. I was gonna go out and get him. I actually thought you were leaving.
Which one, these? That's a good.
Hey, Tony? Somebody.
Yeah.
Hey, Brett. Somebody clearing, cleaned me out. They took everything.
There's been a lot of people in here the last few days, training.
Yeah. Lenny, we know your name. I'm not sure how this, I don't, I'm not sure how this concrete base that you're talking about, I don't, I don't.
The concrete base on the floor?
Yeah, I, I'm not.
Same, same concrete. I know, well, yeah, I forgive him.
You know where I got him? You know who got him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seen it a thousand times.
I don't, I don't think I've been on a dock. Works like concrete on it.
Well, this is gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be a dock that's gonna look like you're on a dock.
That's what we don't want, we want it to look like you're on a dock.
Well, the, the big spaces, we want people to be able to walk around, sit on the fake grass, have a little playground area. It's gonna be wide enough to where. It's like a whole. There'll be shade.
Mario, I wonder if rubber would, would help add electricity over there.
Like triangles, like sails.
Little rubber balls.
Bents, so it's really like having, if anything, it's probably gonna add to it. You know, the, the top of the levee area.
Problem over there is.
Is that if you're waiting for the restaurant?
It's calm down.
So, there'll be walkways that'll just be wood.
I was over there not too long ago and it.
Then there'll be wide.
Come and touch my granddaughter in right there. This cock, well, I say that, now if you're like on the beach yourself, it's a lot of plastic, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Cause you're picking up a lot of static.
It'll be like holes with the.
Those fixtures, those elements, and you touch them, yeah, it's gonna bark, yeah.
There will be a claw, it'll be a shade governed.
I don't want to.
Now, right?
Try to do some static guard, try to ground it.
Yeah, so that'll be.
I don't know.
It'll take it down the way.
They said there's a spray, they'll do.
It'll be windproof.
It'll be like static clean, like. Like Downy, yeah, yeah. It's by cases of Downy. So, when we first got there, that, that opening day, my God, you couldn't touch yourself. We could power this city with it.
Yeah, I agree. Well, it's, well, just, well, kinda the same angle as the benches, it's a really easy, better, like, romantic existence. And some momentum all the way to the roof. I agree, that's like. Yeah, I didn't care for this, so, but I think this, I think this combined with something from these pictures matching. And maybe you just put them at, uh, choke points and like trailheads, like a T, or put them in certain areas. Maybe put a couple over in that, this.
Like Google print.
Yeah, so that's okay, that's okay, we're.
Yeah, that's, I think that, um, actually the cable and the tubes, I think that was my initial thought. Let's do, I thought it kinda closer to the structures that maybe like form an industrial, I thought that's like part of the civic car. I get the issues with that. I, I think it's a cool idea, probably made more sense than it must have worked. Especially light fixtures and benches, it's very easy to remain, uh, very level.
Yeah.
All right. How far out you say it was gonna move in, a hundred?
I would like to, I didn't.
That's odd, too.
It's odd.
Yeah, well, I mean, it should.
Noticeable.
So, a hundred foot's gonna put in, and that's. Water would be, but the structure.
So, they were setting it ironed, it may not be.
Yeah.
Maybe a cooling fan that kick.
I mean, that's why the boat actually, it's cruising.
What's that? What's that?
Could be in Kentucky if you're a hundred foot in.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Remember when we, uh, first put the boat in, Kentucky told us that if you get in our water, we'll rest everybody on that boat?
Yeah.
So then they had to make the boat so it would go backwards in reverse, they couldn't do no turnaround in the river.
I forgot about that too.
Worried about where the state line is relative to the structure.
Yeah, low water mark.
It's the center line of the river.
No, it's.
Low watermark.
Low watermark's the state, state boundary for Kentucky.
Oh.
So, if you go out a hundred foot, you're in.
So, do we need to permit this in Kentucky?
You know, that's a, that's a question, really.
Yeah, it really is, now we're sitting there talking about it.
I'd say we are probably out into Kentucky water.
Mary Bear called Bashir up.
How well you know Bashir's?
Oh, yeah, well, he's trying to run, he's gonna run for reelection, he'll, he'll work with us.
I hope so, cause we could very well be in Kentucky water. Uh, five hundred foot from there?
No, 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 we're five hundred foot from.
The center line.
The center line.
The center line of the channel.
Center line.
Yes, the center line of the channel. We don't know very much down there, Indiana don't.
Well, if we're over in Kentucky, probably they can help pay for this thing.
Yep.
We'll run a orbital bridge over where they can fly.
So, we're definitely turning the Ferris wheel around Kentucky, right? Definitely getting the Ferris wheel.
Whatever.
Sounds like a Kentucky.
We'll let you deliver that.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, thanks Nancy for that, uh, we appreciate that.
Any other questions?
I have a question for you, on the deflector, they have like Lawrence Burke screen printed on it?
Well, it's gonna be underwater, Randy. Yeah, still underwater.
We would be redoing it every year.
Yeah, it'd be getting beat up.
Logs, they'd be tearing it up.
No, it is no Ferris wheel.
No Ferris wheel, no bumper boats.
Hey, now wait.
Got it.
We could actually put a Ferris wheel out there.
Okay, all right.
Matt, you, uh. Well, he won't even let me finish. How's it gonna stop anything down the water?
Okay, so, on the dry side?
Yeah.
Okay. Have there's been any thought towards the, the vehicle we had talked about, about with getting it from street level to the, um, to the river?
Yeah, so, basically they're designed to work on multiple grades. The, the, the original plan, and it still holds, would be to use the existing utility road there, upgrade, you know, maybe the pavement. Uh, keep it at the same slope, except, is the cursor showing up on here? We just need, the only grade we really wanna change is right here, where kinda the existing gangway crosses over the walkway, cause you see this kinda pie shape? That's where, we're proposing to level the grade out, so it has a nice flat place to stop and let people on and off.
Cause right now, it's a little.
Yeah, right now, it's, you know, it's pretty steep, the whole way down, so.
It's a steep cross.
But, but, but the, the, the route would be from up there on, right there.
Yeah, you, basically you get on in the gate and it would take you down the existing.
And down the fire lane.
Yep, and this, this is, you know, this is a good twelve to fifteen feet wide in most places. So, it could, um, it, the, the thought always was, we get more cantilever on that side, so there's a lot more room there to do it. And so, it, it could have places for people to walk and the vehicle to go down. We, the way those things work is just a matter of striping it, and, cause it has to follow like a painted line essentially.
Yeah.
And so, that, that could be put in whenever it's ready to put that system in. Cause it, it's really just a flat area and then it goes down the, the slope.
And is there anything like that around that we could go and sort of visual on at some point?
The closest prototype working system I know of is in Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Las Vegas, what'd you say?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's right next to the Mirage Hotel and.
Ann Arbor, Michigan, I'm not going up there in February.
Yeah, that, that's the closest one I know of that they, where they've tested this out in the Midwest, so.
Just regarding this, what is the distance from here to here versus the distance from here to here? Isn't that pretty close to the same?
No, it was, it was about a hundred ninety feet from the top one.
That's a hundred ninety, and the other gangway is a hundred and thirty-five.
So, plus add another thirty feet here, so you get a hundred and sixty-five feet of walking, once you're dropped off, or versus being dropped off here and having two hundred feet of walking? I mean, it's just, it's just, if this is, if we haven't heard about here, where you drop people off, a vehicle, then, I'm not sure. Is that, is that where the vehicle route you're talking about, where we'd be coming through here?
It's that autonomous vehicle?
The autonomous one, yeah.
I just, I don't see a lot of benefit from the difference between from something, somebody dropping someone off here and being able to go down this gangway to versus a vehicle coming here to drop off to have, also have to walk a hundred and fifty more feet, you know, to get to this point. We're trying to get access to here, right?
Right.
For mobility impaired, is that, that the.
That, that was always the purpose, um, and that, that primary goal was developed in the initial concepts before we kinda came up with the current more ADA friendly. But I think, as we talked about before, the slopes, even with this modified system, aren't gonna quite meet ADA standards. So, somebody might still need that alternative.
Is the slope on the left gonna be an ADA standard?
Um, we're gonna try our best.
You're saying neither of these are gonna fully meet ADA?
No, that, that's not right.
Just when you think a little bit.
Yes, so we're, we're, yes, um, so what is, I think this is before you came in, Mr. Justin, um.
He explained all that, he, we whatever this already, so he did.
I used the break, the break to get him up.
Okay, okay, so, um, what we're gonna end up doing on this existing gangway, cause we're reusing this gangway, is we're gonna do a, a similar, um, elevated ramp system like we have over here. Over on this, switchbacks on this side as well, to make sure that we're getting closer to that ADA, um.
We.
Slope.
The existing gangway here is staying where it's at today.
Today, yes, we're gonna, we're actually gonna even reuse the gangway.
From here to here is steps, not feet. It's, it's maybe, maybe ten feet.
Yeah.
Just think about where that is down now, and where it's gonna be. If you think about where that is down now, and where it's gonna be, I, I, I don't think it's thirty foot or more, five or more feet or something, but you're right, this is still a, a wall.
Right.
For people, but we were just trying, I think, I, I don't know, and, and might, and listen, it may be, it, that's one of the places we have to trim, I don't know, you know, so we don't know.
How does this work with people, it's handicap? They say they're on a, one of them electric cars or something and they wanna go down there.
Right, and one of the ones that we, we had brought forward has, it basically can accommodate a wheelchair, because it's a flat, it's flat on the inside, there's no real engine in the way.
But it's gonna take you to there, then you're, you're still gonna have to climb a step, right, or two?
No, 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 you.
There's no steps.
Yeah, just like it is now, you roll onto the gangway, if you're in a wheelchair, for instance.
Here we go.
Okay.
You just roll pretty fast down the range.
Yeah, but you was talking.
Yeah. Hopefully you got good brakes.
We're gonna work on that. We're gonna work on that.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to even out the slope, so that doesn't happen, but, yeah.
Or are they gonna be?
But there's just some pool elevation.
Oh, I, yeah, I get it. Well, and.
It's gotta be either here.
It's gonna have to be here.
And here.
And, um.
Right there.
Unless I, I'm misremembering things, I think the, part of the idea too was to limit the amount of vehicles that are allowed to use that road in the future. So, so people wouldn't be able to drive themselves down there and do it anymore.
I think we're, we were gonna say, we're gonna eliminate that altogether.
Right, except for maintenance vehicles and those sorts of things, that's correct. And so, I, I can tell you, when we were in town last time, we were walking around, looking at some of the connections and things, and we saw quite a number of people use, do just what we're talking about, park, and somebody with limited mobility got out and actually used the gangway once their car parked there. So, we're almost kinda talking about being able to replace that existing habit, just with an autonomous vehicle, because you're not gonna be allowed to drive your own car down there anymore. So that, I think it's part of that too.
Well, really, uh, yeah, it, it's fire lane. Yeah, they can't be parked down there anyway.
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, what we're saying is, um, the idea in the future is, per, personal vehicles won't be allowed to do that anymore, like they do currently, so this is almost replacing that, that hap, that.
We'll still allow deliveries down there, or no?
No.
They'll be having to come down to the, the, they can come down from the, the, where they do now.
Yeah.
It's at the top, they can either be able to come down the, the new gangplank, or walk down the, the existing walk that's there.
Yup.
And then hit the, the gangplank that's there now, like they do now.
Yep. We, we had, um, talked about, you know, one of those kinda removable baller type things that allow for emergency access, uh, maintenance access, those things, but then for, by all intents and purposes, it'll be closed for regular traffic.
I feel like we're probably gonna have ninety percent of our traffic, foot traffic's gonna go down that main, that new gangway.
Oh.
I think so, yeah.
I agree with you, yeah, I think you're right.
Well, I think that was the hope, right, is it was just an extension of downtown.
Yeah, you, you walk through the gate and there you are, instead of having to go down the little funky path to the, to the right there.
Remind me again, the material of the gangway?
It's just, it's gonna be just like the existing.
Steel.
Steel tube, or I think they're square tubes.
Let me, what's right there now?
Rigid.
Rigid tube.
Yeah.
Tell them that.
Is there any need for any portion on this project to have radiant heat as an option for walkways?
Keep from freezing.
Yeah, to like melt the snow and that kinda thing in the winter? We haven't looked into that, uh, at any length of.
I, I hear, um, I, I think we're gonna be hard pressed to have twelve months a year dining down there. I think it's gonna be very hard pressed to have twelve month a year dining. I think what this is gonna do is extend our season, but I don't see it being twelve, twelve months, I could be wrong.
Well, when the water's up, it's gonna be tough.
Well.
When the water's up, that's gonna be tough down there. It'd be hard to have a lot of people on there then, wouldn't it?
No, it just goes up and down.
I understand it flows up and down, but that water gets going pretty wild down through there.
It won't be.
Pretty strong.
It, it won't, you won't feel it on the barge.
You won't, even no matter how, how high it gets.
Right.
It won't be like now to where the, um.
You're talking about a hundred and forty foot square platform. You're gonna feel like it's like a cruise ship.
Well, I do know.
It's gonna move.
Down there now, it does get underwater.
And barges go by.
It's gonna be higher now.
Yeah, this one's gonna move with.
You're gonna move up higher, aren't you?
That one, yeah, that will be up higher, but the, the, the new one is gonna move with it anyway.
That's it.
Yeah. So I think that there's a design flaw with these existing river, river wash. Um, in the way that the gangway connects down to it, and doesn't let it go all the way up, because I've seen.
You're gonna have it actually higher up.
Yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll go up further on those piles, because I think there's a constriction point.
Yeah.
That they didn't think about, and, because I've seen some of the flooding pictures, like from the news article when the tiki bars sing.
Right.
And it's like.
Factor that in.
Like this.
Exactly.
And I think that, and it's right where that gang, gangway connects to the actual barge, because the gangway doesn't sit on the barge, it connects to the side of it, like right here.
So it was designed wrong.
Yeah, something was designed funky there, so we'll work to fix that, so it doesn't do that.
What, uh?
But there is gonna be a point.
Yeah, that's great.
When the gangway's underwater.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's something that we need to think about operationally.
Mm-hmm.
At what elevation is it gonna close to the public? Because they just can't get down there.
Two different, the, the tiers, what are the differences in the heights of, of this location and this location? Are these gonna be similar? This, this.
Let's see, that one, yes, so the existing one is probably be lower, I think the platform we're looking at about four seventy-eight.
The platform would be four seventy-eight?
The top of it, yes.
Okay, so it'll be about eight feet higher than existing.
There's a big door tonight, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd say, once we get above the existing one, that's where we're gonna start.
Or close to it, yeah.
Yeah. They close their boats.
Couple times a year.
Over in Northern Kentucky, they, they close down the floods.
Right, but what we're saying, what I'm saying is, is some of this is gonna get underwater. If it's high enough, your, your walkway's gonna be underwater. And that's, that's what I'm saying about it being open, how long it can be open or.
Not gonna be on. Well, what, what's gonna ha- this is, I think we're gonna be, extend the season. I think our season will be extended, but I don't, I don't see twelve months.
I don't know what your utility wise are gonna run on.
Because then you're gonna deal with, you know, dead of the winter, your, people aren't, number one, they're not gonna walk that walk.
Yeah, just, just the walk alone in the winter is.
They're not gonna do that. You got ice to, to worry about, like what you were talking about, but I, that, people just aren't gonna go down there to eat, and it.
How quickly does he shut down now?
He's done after the, um, oh, music.
Yeah.
October, right, around October.
Be nice to extend this to December one and back up, you know, March long.
Yep.
Yeah, because today wasn't a bad day out here.
No, I, I agree, that's what I said, I think it's gonna extend our season, but, you know, to where maybe it's only closed four months, three months.
Be nice if we've got a problem all the way to Christmas.
I was thinking, in the season every year, New Year's Eve, on the barge.
Yeah.
Yep.
There you go.
That'd be fun.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
How high, how high's that river gotta get before you gotta think about setting it down, or do you guys are worse gonna get underwater? Have you figured that out?
About four seventy.
That plateau, that platform.
How much?
About four seventy, so ten, was it normal pool elevation?
Fifty-two feet, sixty feet?
So.
It's gotta bounce to twenty feet.
Like twenty feet?
Twenty feet from, from normal, you're saying?
Normal, yeah.
See now, the amount's up twenty.
Pool elevation says about four fifty-five. The existing gangway is at like four seventy.
How often does it get that high? Twenty feet? Couple times a year.
Couple times a year.
Every year.
But not for long, right? You're like a couple days.
No, it's not that long. It, it's a hit or miss, really, whatever happens upstream, you know, and we.
Takes us longer to clean it up than the water was there.
Then it's closed.
Yeah.
Well, and I, you know, the, the, the deflector is gonna help with a lot of our issues we have now. And so Mark, you're right, I mean, that's, that's a big piece of the project, to be honest.
Yes, it is.
That's a, that's a big piece, it really is, really a big piece.
I'd like to take, take a visual of one, if we can, yeah, in Hawaii.
Yeah.
They got shoreline there, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, 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 who's in?
Let me get you one and thank.
First, first two people to raise your hand.
Hey Mayor, I'll say, I'll say one thing, if you can get us a trip to Hawaii to look at this, I won't say nothing else about her.
Ferris wheel?
You said it, I didn't.
I, I like the Ferris.
Yeah, might be cheaper to get the Ferris wheel. Yeah. Okay, a, any other questions from this group for that group? Anything else you have to share with us today?
Yeah, that was the bulk of it.
This was the bulk of it.
Audiences, anybody have anything they would like to ask questions about?
I just wanna make a comment.
Can you get the microphone, please?
You want me up there?
Yes, please.
I only have one word.
That's okay. We, we want everybody, hey Scott, we want everybody to hear what you're saying.
Name, address.
He said I can only say one word.
Scott.
Oh.
Name, address, and birthday.
Yeah. I'm Scott McLean, everybody knows that, but anyway, this is totally awesome. It's incredible what you guys are doing and putting together here, I mean, wow. From our being here, but five years now, and.
It's huge.
That's all I gotta say, it's wonderful. Good job.
Need the price tag yet?
We're gonna have to be asking you to contribute.
Yeah.
In this section right here, Mario and I were talking at the break, and just to kind of put a bug in your ear, as the water gets high and it gets into these contours, how, how do we keep that debris from just coming right in here and then causing the same issue before? If, do we need to build a wall? Do we need to consider a wall so high through here to help divert on land, it'll be, so it'd be visible during the normal?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things we're gonna try and optimize, is where that connection point is, and, so, it's, it's something that we're looking at for sure.
I mean, there's probably fifteen, twenty feet between water levels.
And it may be that we just have to tie, tie it back to land somewhere, and it might be that mooring.
Right.
Area, um, wherever that was. It's just something that we're.
It's just about at that bend of the, the levee.
About the levee.
Yeah.
And another thing I was thinking about with that container there, that you're talking about resisting the debris and stuff, you're talking about how high you're gonna make it, people saying on the barge, are you gonna see, is this big?
Oh, it's gonna be underwater.
It's, it's all underwater, other than the guide piles that stick up.
It's not gonna be up above the water at all?
No, it's, it's.
It's just gonna stay even with the water?
The flotation will probably keep it up above the water, maybe like this high.
You'll just see the flotation.
You'll just see the flotation.
That'll keep, that'll keep the, the trees and stuff from going over, and all the wood debris and all that?
Yeah.
Should.
It's what it's designed to do.
It's not a bad idea.
That's where it's trying to figure out how to keep the boats from accidentally skipping, skipping.
Line it up.
There won't be no accident.
Line it on top.
Well, you'll have to have a sign saying.
We're just supposed to yellow caution tape.
That's it.
And that might be, I mean, you're right, there may have to be some sort of sign that, you know, do not enter.
But definitely something, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Dum dum here, wait.
When you said they'll have lights on top of each.
And they'll have lights on top.
There'll be caution warning lights on top of each one.
Yeah, they'll be lights on top of the piles, and there'll probably be intermittent lights, depending on how far apart the piles are.
Leave me around here, people will.
What's gonna happen?
Somebody will get.
Even if you lose power.
So only you and one.
It's on them.
Challenge accepted, is what I heard.
Yeah.
Mayor, do we need to talk about, Mario and I were also talking about backup power, you know?
Standby.
Standby, if, if we do have an outage, obviously emergency lighting will be in the restaurants so people can get out, but then, say it's.
That's solar, isn't it on top of the?
The debris divertor is solar, but no, we're running power.
I'm talking about safety, people, egress and ingress on the, on the actual barges, if, say that, say electric goes off, if safety lighting, because your bathrooms, if electric goes off, there's a light.
Okay.
These lights will light up here, or a couple of these will go on because they're battery backup, but walking in and out, awful.
I'll, I'll talk to our electrical engineer about that.
There may be possibility of.
He may have already built it in to the plan, um, but I'll talk to him.
I don't, and I don't.
You're saying in the evening hour, so to speak.
Yeah, at nighttime, we just need power. You'll be able to, their safety lighting is important in the building, and it'll be there, but it won't be on any of the walkways going in and out, unless it's already for the design.
So if you got four or five lights, there in the barge.
I got what you're saying.
Candles. Hand them out.
Good point.
Hand some candles out, we can do that.
Everybody just get your phone out, flashlights.
There's emergency.
Yep.
Okay.
Good question. Anyone else? Well, we appreciate everybody, we appreciate y'all coming down, we appreciate folks coming out and listening. I appreciate you guys being here, uh, we, we look at this as one of the most important projects that we, we're gonna do in the city. Uh, it's been talked about for years and years and years.